Morning again. We're now at the Special State Board of Education meeting that was called yesterday. The action items, the first up is, of course, a hearing on the Covenant Keeper renewal, and this emanates out of a vote yesterday by the State Board of Education to review the decision made by the Charter authorizing panel in January. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Ballard.
All right. Reginald Ballard, Public School Accountability. So the first action item is just a hearing on the open enrollment charter, school renewal for Covenant Keepers. On January 25th, 2019, the Charter authorizing panel met and accepted the Covenant Keepers charter schools voluntary non-renewal. On February 14th, 2019, the State Board of Education voted to review the decision made by the panel.
Mary Claire Hyatt, Arkansas Department of Education. So first, I'm going to go through the procedure of how the hearing will go, and then I'll move into more the dealing with the actual hearing. So typically, how these hearings would work is not with a voluntary non-renewal. This is a really unique situation. Typically, how it happens is the person requesting the review would receive 20 minutes, followed by 20 minutes of any opposition, with five minutes for rebuttal, and then questions following. So we'll kind of follow that as much as we can, considering the uniqueness of the situation. That being said, I'll present the facts that the department has, and then allow you to ask questions. On January 15th, 2019, as Reggie just said, the Charter authorizing panel accepted the voluntary non-renewal of Covenant Keepers charter. A decision letter reviewing the Charter authorizers' decision and notifying the school that ADE approval was necessary to pay outstanding debt was sent on January 16th, 2019. Between January 16th, 2019, and January 25th, 2019, three counter withdrawals totaling $176,472.93 were withdrawn from the Covenant Keepers operating account without the approval of the current operator or the local board. These withdrawals were not discovered until the business manager attempted to reconcile January's bank statements on Friday, February 8th, 2019. Subsequently, the department placed a hold on the Covenant Keepers operating account on Monday, the 11th. That same day, Covenant Keepers notified the local board of the unauthorized, unapproved, excuse me, withdrawals, and asked for a special board meeting. Immediately, the department received emails of resignation from all of the board members except for one. While Friendship, the current charter operator, was attempting to put together documentation to help the Department of Education release the funds to meet payroll that's due today, it was discovered that on the afternoon of Friday, February 8th, prior to the freeze on the bank account, another counter withdrawal in the amount of $12,433 was made from the operating account without approval of the current operator or the local board. With all of their withdrawals, Covenant Keepers was left with $15,461.41 in the operating account. Additionally, on January 14th, in between February 2nd and February 3rd, an unknown amount of inventory was removed from the Covenant Keepers campus without the knowledge of the charter operator. The charter unit began an onsite inventory of the Covenant Keepers campus on Thursday, February 7th, after receiving notice of the missing items. There's an ongoing concern from the department about state and federal purchase inventory items being removed from the school without proper approval. There's also a financial concern because the Covenant Keepers operating account has just over $15,000, which is enough to pay most of the payroll that's due today. However, in the next week, an additional, what can, in addition to the payroll, so altogether, within the next week, there's $44,328.22 due, including the payroll, teacher retirement, taxes, food service, after-school program, and a couple of other things. The school doesn't have enough money to operate really through the end of today. Additionally, the Covenant Keepers local board only has one remaining board member, so they have no local governing structure. We are happy to answer questions, the charter unit, myself, also the current charter operator Friendship is here, can answer questions, and we also have members of the Charter authorizing panel, should you have any questions to them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hyatt.
Yes, Dr. Barth, and let me just add to that, to say it is our recommendation and request that you all would revoke the charter today. That, that action will then allow us to approach or to request the Arkansas Legislative Audit to then begin working on investigating the situation there as it relates to the Covenant Keepers funds. I know you will all have questions about what happens next with the students, and that's something that is part of the item number two on the agenda today.
And I also have little packets I'll hand out to you that just has copies of the letters the department has sent to the school and the board, as well as a breakdown of what that $44,000 that's coming due in the next couple of days, and the letters of resignation from the local board.
Thank you, Ms. Hyatt. After you distribute those, and I'll start down with Ms. McFetridge, and just come around and see who has what questions. All right, folks ready? Start asking questions. Any, any, sorry, I'll just start with Ms. McFetridge, and just see if there are any questions.
Do we have a, do we have any kind of inventory before we asked for this on January 29th? Is there any record of inventory that was already available?
There was a record of inventory that was available, that was given to the school. That was kind of a, a starting point for us before we went in to do the state inventory. And so right now, what we have done, we've gone into, to complete our inventory, and we reconcile what they had with the items that we also notated.
Ms. Newton, anything?
Just a question on the funds. With the bills that are coming up and the funds that are short, what will happen when you don't have enough money to pay the bills?
Mary Claire Hyatt. So fortunately, we do have enough money to cover most of the payroll that's due today. So I'm in the process of working with the bank to get those funds released. That leaves money for food service, taxes, teacher retirement, and after-school program. I think one other thing. So typically, how this works is, once a charter is revoked, we become in receivership of all of the funds and estate property, and can sell assets if there are any to be sold to pay debts. If they have any additional money coming to the school, we would be in receivership of that. I do think, after I talked with ADE Finance, that they have a tax refund coming back, and that they might have another federal dispersment, but I don't believe it's enough to cover all of the items on that list. So what happens is then, you know, we, we will accept notification from vendors, letting us know that they have outstanding debt, try and pay as much of that as we can from the remaining debts of the school. And if there's not enough money, then those invoices don't get paid unless we can figure out a way to sell assets of the school, or if they have any additional funds coming in.
And my next question will have to do with the students, so we'll wait.
Okay. Dr. Hill, anything? Ms. Chambers, okay? Ms. Hook, anything?
When will the next payment of state funds be the, the...
Gregor Rogers, Department of Education. The normal distribution of state funds is supposed to not be till next week, next Friday.
And that is, had a number of students divided by the number of months, and that's what comes in?
Well, it would be based off the ADM that they have, because they've been in, so we know what that would be next year, because it's based off last year's three-quarter ADM. But, so we know what it will be, but it wouldn't hit till next Friday.
And do you, off the top of your head, know if it's enough money to cover some of these expenses?
Based off the, the requests, the debt that we have right now, it would be, but I don't know that we know for sure how much is still out there.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Rogers, if, if there is a revocation, can that money still flow to...
So, the way the, the law works right now is that there's amendment to someone's charter request, then they are current-year funded. So we'd have to work that out with, obviously with Mary Claire, to see how we're going to proceed on that, but we could work with something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hook, I would say I have received notice from one additional vendor yesterday of an outstanding amount. I'm not sure of the amount right now. They were going to send me an invoice and let me know what it was, but, so that's at least one additional cost of the school.
Ms. Williamson, Dr. Moore, Ms. House, anything? Okay. Are there any additional questions about where, where things stand on this piece? And Ms. Newton, on your question about students, are you, do you need that answer before we make a decision on this? Okay, great. Okay, is there further discussion, knowing what you know about this issue? If not, then you have heard the recommendation from the department, and I would entertain a motion, if folks are ready to move in that direction.
To revoke, second.
All right, motion to revoke the charter.
Can you please clarify, revoke either immediately or revoke at a specific date? Thank you.
Okay. So, motion is to revoke immediately. Ms. Newton with the motions, Ms. Chambers with the second. We'll do a roll call on this one.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
All right, that vote's unanimous. And so we'll now move to the second action item, which is amendment request from Friendship.
All right, so the second item is a consideration for the, of the Charter authorizing panel decision on open enrollment charter, public charter school amendment with Covenant Keepers. On February 14th, 2019, Representatives of Friendship Aspire Academy appeared before the Charter authorizing panel to request an amendment to their charter. The panel approved the request. The State Board may exercise a right of review and conduct a hearing on the determination at the State Board's next meeting.
Just a little information on process. So it is appropriate for you to ask questions, either of the department or of the person seeking the amendment request, but the motion would be to review or not review, so this isn't a full hearing, but it is appropriate for you to ask questions.
Okay, that sounds good. So I'll start over here to my right. Ms. House, anything? Dr. Moore? Okay, Ms. Hook?
Be sure that I understand, the original charter for Friendship, starting next year, was K-5. They would now become K-8, and are, are they asking to increase their maximum number of students?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. The original request was for K-5. This would expand them to allow them to accommodate the students that were at Covenant Keepers by going up to K-8.
And it's my, if I'm remembering correctly, this is one of the charters that does provide transportation?
Yes, ma'am, they have transportation.
So this would not be a hardship if any of those students chose to go to the, the different site than where they are now?
Friendship had stated yes. They have two buses that they would designate to provide transportation for those students.
Okay, thanks.
And Dr. Barth, if I may add, Ms. Hook, too, just so you know, you know, when we talk about choice, I want you, the board, to know there, there are choices with respect to if these students want to opt for something else. I've talked to Mr. Poor. The, the district is certainly open to the students coming back into their zoned areas. So I think he said Cloverdale, Mabel Vale, and possibly Dunbar could be options, depending on where these students live. We had also checked, as we were working through, trying to determine possible contingency plans for the students. The Exalt Academy has, has some seats, and Little Rock Prep has some seats. So I, and I appreciate the work that Friendship has done, hoops they've jumped through. I just want everybody to know, this isn't a Friendship-only, and the students will still have a choice if they want to go to one of these other schools.
And that, that actually is, builds to my question, which was, the logistics of this, of the transfer process for, for students, what, what will this be like, and, and how, how will we ensure true choice related to these other options?
Mary Claire Hyatt, I'll pass this out to you. This is a proposed transition plan from Friendship. I think in addition to this transition plan, which goes through meeting with parents and staff to explain options, that the charter unit would work with families to make sure that if Friendship was not the choice that they wanted to make, that we could help them get enrolled either into their local school in Little Rock School District or one of the other local charters. I'll pass this out to you now, which is the detailed action plan from Friendship that the panel saw yesterday.
Great.
And that includes the transition plans for any students who are receiving special education service? Thanks.
Could, could someone explain for me, and I'm sure parents that are concerned, exactly what's going to happen to kids that are in the classroom today, and what's going to happen Monday? So, so we can get a, a little bit of feelings of security, that these kids are not going to get lost over the next few days and weeks.
Great.
Yeah, I, I think that's something that the Friendship team could probably answer for you. Thankfully, Monday is a holiday.
So Tuesday, yeah.
Scheduled already, which is helpful in that it gives more, a little more time for the charter team, the Friendship team, everybody to work with these families, to make sure they understand what their options are.
Good morning. My name is Joe Harris. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Friendship Education Foundation. We're the CMO that's currently operating and managing the school. To answer your question directly, our goal is to ensure that there's as least disruption to the school's education and the kid's normal day of operations. So it's our goal during this transition to continue operating the school. The staff, students, and parents will be notified at least at three different communication points about the transition, which will begin today. The staff, both the instructional and administrative staff, will be coming to see the new school, and we will begin the efforts to set up the classrooms. Our goal is by not this Monday coming, but the following Monday, to have the school, the school open and the kids report to the new school building. We will notify parents beginning today. We will have school tours for the kids on next Tuesday. Then we will have a parent night and parent event at the new location for the parents to see the new school. Part of our approach is that we want the parents and student to feel as though they are involved in this process, and they have input.
So will the kids be in school today and next week?
Yeah, yes. Kids are half-day.
No, kids are not in school today, it's a parent conference day.
Okay.
Microphone, if you come with a microphone. And identify your, your name for the record.
I'm sorry, my name is Lauren Chapman, I'm the principal. School, students are not on campus today because it's parent conference day, and then Monday is the holiday, so they will resume school on Tuesday.
Okay. And if I remember right, there are parents that are not English-language, are you making efforts to...
Correct. We have three staff members that are Spanish-speaking, that are translating all of our communications, both in person and in writing, so that we can make sure that that could, that they are also made fully aware of all that's going on.
Okay. And, and children need extra, I don't know how to phrase it correctly, but extra feelings of security when there's change, and are, are you going to make efforts in that way also?
Sure. We're very much aware of the social-emotional component that change causes, and we've been very proactive on the front end through this process, and had communications with them before, as we have looked at potentially having the new school for next year, if we were able to, to assume the charter when this all began. So they've been involved with the conversation, and so we will continue to keep them involved, and continue by bringing them to the school ahead of time and having those conversations with them. Prevent any of that, as much as, or to the extent that we can, present, prevent anxiety about the change.
Right. If you could make it an exciting process, instead of a scary process?
Most of them are very much excited about it, and I think, right, we, we really, that's, that's what we're going for, is to really make it an exciting time, and I know a lot of our eighth graders, originally, were, were hearing the information as, as a change potentially happening for next year, and they were feeling a little left out, because they were going to be going on to high school, and so I think they will very much embrace and be excited about the opportunity to participate in a school change before they leave and go to high school.
Okay.
So that is, that's been the, the pulse of the student body to date.
We have a lot of adult problems, but we don't want our adult problems to affect our kids.
Totally agree.
I do want to, and you have several questions I wanted to ask, but in terms of this issue of true choice, is, is the department going to be onsite for tho, for those families for whom this travel or this transition might not make sense, and, and because of siblings or some other reason, neighborhood schools may make more sense? Is there going to be, is the department going to be there to, to aid in terms of this issue of, of the, the array of options that are open to, to parents?
Well, I'll let Reggie address that. I mean, I'm going to say yes, but to the details of that, I'll let Mr. Ballard address it.
Yeah, and so when we're looking into it, because we do want it to be a seamless process for the students and the families that are there, and also let them know that, you know, we are dedicated to their student success, and so we've looked into those options, as Commissioner Key said, and so we'll be there onsite to communicate as well to the parents, and let them know that they have support from the Department of Education.
Great, thank you.
And I think it's key to remember, too, is that these people and this staff have been serving these kids, it will primarily just be a different building.
Right.
So it, it won't be like, it'll be change, but, you know, sometimes we like moving into something new. I wonder if you, if you go to K-8, will you have enough space in the building that you're moving to?
To answer that question, yes. The Garland School was fully renovated, it has two, I'm sorry, 20 very large classrooms. It is on two floor, two floors. We've developed a co-education model where the middle school will occupy the entire top floor. They will have their own separate entrance. This for us, moving the middle school here is, our plan is for this to be a short-term effort. We are looking for a new facility that will be located in or near the current school. It will be in south-southwest, so we believe long-term we'll make a commitment to the community. But this is a, not just a stopgap measure for the immediate issues we concern, we're concerned with, but it's our plan to put our kids in an appropriate space at every juncture of this process.
Commissioner, Commissioner...
Well, if I may follow up, Dr. Barth, your question, my team's texted me, and actually, your question was a question or a request by the charter panel yesterday for ADE folks to be on hand, and we even have some of our team members, in addition to their Spanish translation, we have ADE team members that will be there doing that same thing as well.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Moore?
Yes, just logistically, how far apart are the two campuses?
Fang Chan, Superintendent. So they're about seven minutes apart, so it's not too far. And also, I want to say that I have petitions here that we did, from the parents and the community, to support us in opening school under Friendship. So if you want to see this, I can pass it along. And at the same time, so it, there's about 500 signatures here of support from the community, and at the same time, we can retain all our teachers to move over to a new building. So nothing's going to be disruptive, because it's the same face, the same teachers, same students, so on and so forth. So if you want to see this, I can pass this along to you, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. And just as a refresher, what grade will you all open next year?
Sure. So next year, we'll open K-N1, and then the year after that, we're going to add on the second grade, the year after that, we're going to add third grade, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so will this, the sixth through eighth grade, will that remain open?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
K-1, sixth through eighth.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any, I can't remember where I stopped. Ms. Dean, any questions? Any other questions, destruction? All right, Ms. McFetridge, you're good? Okay. All right, Ms. Hyatt?
I just want to clarify one thing about the petition, just so that we all know. So the petition, I believe, was garnered between the time that they were going to try and open a 6-8 this upcoming school year, so these, this isn't necessarily just from the past week, and I just wanted to make sure that we're being transparent in that.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Uh-huh. Ms. McFetridge?
How are you managing your support services? Because 105 new students is, is quite a bit. Counseling or...
Hi, sorry. Lauren Chapman, Principal. Our support services currently are servicing our 105 students, and both through ELL and our special ed services, and then as new students come in, we will, we can adequately support, you know, those new IEDs. since you got to Arkansas, and we're typically, this is unique, and we appreciate, or I appreciate your patience and your understanding and your focus on students.
Yes.
Well, we are happy to be here. We are enjoying every minute of it.
All right, if there are no other questions, thank you all very much, then, as Ms. Hyatt said, the proper motion is either to review the, the decision of the charter authorizing panel for the amendment, or to not review that.
Move to not review. Second?
All right, motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Zook. Why don't we do a quick roll call?
Ms. Zook?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. McFetridge?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
All right, so that decision is unanimous, so that, that is approved, and so that's our, our only action that we need to carry out this morning. We don't think had any public comment on this item, is that correct, Ms. Freenow? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting.
So move.
So a motion by Ms. Dean, second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We'll reconvene up at 2:01 a.m. in about, let's say, just a few minutes before 11:00.